This conference will now be recorded.
That's a quorum.
I just saw it now. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, it's 5:00. Crusty is what I expected, but we'll call it.
Peter will be here in 10.
We'll call this meeting order and ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Happy tonight. We actually have two speakers and that's good because it gives me a little bit of a break. But the first presentation presenter is Patrick Wells, who I think everybody in the room knows. And those of you who are joining us virtually, good evening, Scott. So Patrick, you have the floor and the purpose of this is to give the board and any other members of the public who happen to be joining us virtually, a sense of what our capabilities have become in terms of how we manage information. It's all information that's been around for a long time, but this is a different way of managing it so that we can actually use the information as opposed to just simply pile it up and put it on shelves. So Patrick Wells, you have the floor.
Thank you. So for those who don't know, I'm the village coordinator and or the technical coordinator for the village. And some of my main responsibilities are developing, implementing, and maintaining GIS-based maps for several of our utilities. Primarily the electric department, the water department, and today I've been in contact with Brad about the highway department. So just kind of like a quick overview, before our GIS map for the electric department really kicked off, this is what our electric department was using as a map. And for those who can't see all too well, it is a CAD panel in a PDF that is a little chunk of a neighborhood. So whenever anyone wanted to know where, for instance, on the map, pole tennis on this line, they'd have to either flip through several different books to find the reference of where to look, and then they'd flip to the correct reference and hope that this map was made in a time where the information they're looking for was up to date and actually implemented it. Now, one of the other things is, a lot of it is whenever there was a change, because it's a paper-based map, which is the primary kind of use that had been used, whenever there was any work done, most of it would be annotated directly onto the paper-based map. So for instance, if a new line went in or another pole was placed, you would go in and write on with ink or different color annotations to be like, this pole doesn't exist. We've created a, you know, a pad or sectionalizer in this area to kind of create an up-to-date reference. And one of the downsides of that is it's a static map. That way, it gets changed at one level and essentially it doesn't reflect any of the other versions that anyone else had. And one of the benefits of the current map that we have, this is, for your reference, this is Greenwood Street over here and Acorn Street. I chose this because I think my house is somewhere in the mix. But so for the same area in the same neighborhood, this map shows us poles, pole numbers, and lines. So what our current map does, it'll load into a lot of stuff. This is the same exact area, except it is represented in color with high definition imagery as a background to help you figure out what you're looking for if it decides to load. And instead of being a 2D flat object, it has a life of its own. So whereas on the old CAD map, you just have an annotation or a text label for this is Pole 20. Now what we can do is, you can select an object and it has all sorts of different information on it. It'll tell you the pole number, what street it's on, if it has a cutout, if it's open or not. And this goes for all of our different assets for the electric department, from transformers to sectionalizers to enclosures. So now we're not, well, we're able to have at our fingertips not only locational reference, we're able to access all of the records related to that item. So instead of having to look at a paper map and then figure out, oh, we're looking for Pole 20, and then go to our reference books to look up Pole 20, to look at what's on it, what's connected to it, we're able to go, it's a one-stop shop essentially. And a little bit of a better explanation of this is, let me pull this up. So this is a GIS hub website that I put together for, it's an inter-organization website. It's primarily used by myself because I have far too many tabs for each of the different department maps. So a quick showing of the electric department map in a little bit more of a detail. Let's see. Should have tested it on this place with Wi-Fi first. So all of these represent different objects within the electrical utility. You have different symbologies for different items. Squares are pads, triangles are sectionalizers. And you can go in and identify what everything is if you're not intimately familiar. So that way, you can have people come in who don't know the system and they'll have the ability to get a lot of information from not just using the acronyms, which is a lot of how the old CAD maps were kind of set up. And with this, again, if you click on an item or you can go and select it, it'll have, let's see if I go over to For instance, several weeks ago or months at this point, time is kind of irrelevant in that current day and age. Up at Sandpoint, we were able to go out and geolocate all of our equipment up there. So we're able to map where the underground lines are. So in the future, if we have a dig safe in the area, we can look at our map first to determine if we know and if we're confident that there is conduit in the ground in the area. We can then, if we're certain that that is the case and we've mapped that area, it streamlines the process. But in addition to that, it helps people go back and find all this information. Because it's not only on a website or a computer, this is accessible to everyone's device, smartphones, laptops. Essentially, anything that you can connect to the internet, you'd be able to utilize this. Which means that all the linemen have an app on their phone, so if they're in an area and they're working on a down tree, they can open up the map instead of calling the office and they can see where they are in relation to the utility network. They can see what might impact their work or what their work might impact. And so with this, another nice thing is, it just has a bunch of the information about like the accuracy. Let's see where, like these good ones. Yeah. And another area, last Friday, Kimball and Ted and I went up to parts of the West Lake, which is an area that ideally, we have to visit rarely because it is quite out there. But we went out and located a lot of the enclosures and transformers from that area. So now if there ever is an issue, we can go over and Oh, it is loading, goodness. And properly identify it. Or should have grabbed. Just going to quickly refresh the webpage, that'll fix that. But essentially, it allows us to see what we're actually looking at. I have it set up so when people, you know, the line to go and they install a transformer, they'll take pictures of the installation process and of the transformer. So if there's any questions back in the office, someone can go to their computer, go to that item, open up the pictures, they can see what's in the transformer, what's around the transformer. So instead of having to take the time to send someone out to inspect the transformer a second time just for paperwork, we're able to do that instantly in the office, which saves so probably the office a lot of time. There we go. And the other thing that's put into this is, it calculates a lot of information for us. So we can figure out how many utility poles have been mapped out. So currently, how it is set up, so there are 1,037 poles that we have not located. We've relocated approximately 6% of all the poles in the network. And that's kind of represented where on this map all of the, it's kind of hard to tell with the amount of stuff going on. So I'll turn some of it off. All of the green items have been located by the electric department. The yellow ones were located by tanks, so we'll revisit those eventually. But this essentially lets us know that we're confident if we're working in those areas. Ooh, it's very jumpy. That if we're working in the areas where we have located items, we're able to go in and make sure that all of our assets are there, which helps with asset management. And one of the nice things is in areas that like a Google Street View has gone in, so for instance, over on Cascade, I have it set up that if you were to go and you can select a pole, you can scroll to the bottom and there's a link that I put together that'll ideally, if it has been there, will automatically open up Google Street View right to where the pole is. Usually not facing the right direction. Yeah, which it then gives you a date when this imagery was taken. So this kind of helps us figure out if we know that this is an area that hasn't changed a lot, we can kind of picture what's going on. And again, it just brings all of the tools that we have in one place. So the electric department definitely has taken a majority of my time and it is continuing to expand. There is a lot to do and it's a very interesting project and I look forward to continuing it. One of the other utilities that we're still kind of working on getting all together is the water department. The water department is a lot nicer in my opinion, because they really just need to know where things are versus a transformer that you have to worry about the voltage, you have to worry about the company numbers, PCBs. But water department, we can just figure out where the valves are, the pipe diameters, and then we can display all this information in a way that is useful. So Tracy and some of his guys have gone out and grabbed huge chunks of the village, primarily in the residential areas. And while doing so, they're able to create a map that, for instance, if in the winter, there's an area that they need to visit where a valve is buried either under the ground or in the snow, they'll have an app on their phone that they can pull up that'll give them a better approximation of where the item is that they're actually looking for. Which will also help if they go out with the locating device attached to their phone, so that way they'll get that higher accuracy. Because a phone is roughly, it's somewhere within like 15 to 30 feet usually. So that way, if you go using one of the GPS tools that we have, or the GPS tool that we have, you can use it to pinpoint exactly where a valve is if it's buried in someone's yard or if it's buried in a snowbank. So this way, we know where things are, we know what they are. And like again, you can go in and do some quick statistics, figure out that so far, out of all of the valves that have been collected, 142 of them have been buffalo style valves. Which you can then take all this information, we have material diameters, so you can create a network for your utility. And as we call it, a utility network. And we can use that to do a lot of cool things. And then the last project that I've been really focusing on is a short-term rental map. So this is a very basic map that shows approximate locations of registered short-term rentals. And this is as of a couple of weeks ago, when I last got the information regarding. And one of the things it is useful for, and again, this is for inter-organizational use only, and any information should really be kind of directed towards the short-term rental and building plan department. But it helps us figure out where the densities of these short-term rentals are. So I created a layer of short-term rental density. We turned off some of the background. Which shows and to no surprise, most of the dense areas are within those residential areas and residential districts. But one of the other things we can do is, we can turn on another layer that overlays the planning department like land code, so that way you can see where all of the short-term rentals are. You have access to the Essex County tax records when you click on the parcel. So we can use this information to come up with better strategies to help the, you know, help communities and just make sure that the information is available to those who are coming up with different rules and regulations regarding. And one of the other things is, you can go up and select a lot of this stuff. So for instance, if we wanted to know that currently there are, I think in this, there's 466 short-term rentals registered. And of those 466, there we go. 199 or 47, about 48%, are the unhosted, non-owner occupied short-term rentals. And you can use this for different statistics. For instance, there's 88 or 20% of the condo type short-term rentals. And I set it up that if you want, you can go into filters, so you can search, for instance, if you want to find out how many short-term rentals that are the unhosted, non-owner occupied within a specific planning district. And I think the most common use will probably be the South Lake Residential. So if you turn these on, the little tic tacs, and go back to this infographic, it'll change dynamically to what you selected. Although it is such. Yeah. So for instance, in the Gateway Corridor, 89% of the short-term rentals within the Gateway Corridor consist of the unhosted, non-owner occupied. And so you can use this tool to kind of help figure out where the distribution of different short-term rental types all within different districts. And again, it's just another, it's a visual tool to help everyone figure out what's going on and instead of having to look at graphs and spreadsheets, it takes that information, because all that information is still there. It's just hidden behind the location. Because the location is really the one thing that I think is most important. Because it takes, and same with all the other maps, the water, the electric, the sewer and stormwater. It takes all of those information and all of those records and condenses it in a form that is easy to use, easy to look at, and easy to present. Instead of having to go through and show all however many thousand records for the electric department, I can just hold the map and show you where our items are, tell you what they are, when they were installed, when they were last checked. And it just makes everything a lot easier. And then in addition to that, one of the nice things that we have is, this is very useful for the electric department. We have some high-definition imagery that allows us to, I should have done this on the electric department map, but it lets us actually look at areas using aerial imagery. And we can pinpoint where poles are, where overhead transformers are, just from an overhead view. And we can even see where like meters are installed via the triplex lines that runs to them. Let's see if that loads right. We should have brought a Wi-Fi booster. Yeah, but essentially, I think the main thing is that as these maps develop and as we continue to develop and grow our GIS capabilities, we'll be able to expand and utilize more information than I think the village has. Like as put, it's there, but it hasn't been utilized. And now I think there's a way to take that information and use it in a very useful way, in a very communicative way. So are there any questions or anything that anyone would like to inquire about?
On the short-term rental map, can you link that to the Google Earth so you could zoom in and see what buildings are on that site?
Yes.
You know, like you did with the electric where you could see where a pole is, but let's say you wanted to see what the house looked like, you want to see if the house had a garage, you want to see if the house had a park in or a separate building with it.
Technically, yes. How it works is it creates a coordinate system and then hopes Google Map or the Google Car was close by. Because most of these points are based off of non-exact locations, they're based off of the centroid or the center of the tax parcel, it might get you close to the location.
That definitely shows the question.
Yeah, I definitely think that might be.
Well, when you get on the property map, you do see a shadow of where the building is.
Yeah.
We did look at someone, for instance, who said, well, this thing that I'm renting is on my property and according to the Essex County tax map, it goes right through the building they're renting. Whereas if the building is on two, so you can see the shadows of the buildings. And I don't know if that resolution comes here. The other thing that Patrick did that we asked him to do is, is to deal with the number, not only units and the types of units, but the number of bedrooms. So that way you get a better understanding of the infiltration, because obviously a short-term rental of 20 that has a capacity of 20 has a different impact on a neighborhood that are capacity of 5. So we can also play with the numbers. We've used this tool quite a bit already. And Patrick's been a wonder to work with every time we've asked. We need some more information so we can play with things. It's always been there.
Thanks for reminding me. I forgot, I have a, it's a 3D map of the village that represents short-term rentals by registered permitted bedrooms, which is representative of these columns. To kind of illustrate, instead of that 2D visualization of the density, you can kind of see where a majority of these are. And again, they are in the residential areas and the conduits do kind of spike. But you can see that it is impacting other areas over, you know, one or the other. But again, it's just another visual tool to kind of help capture what is going on to give us a better understanding of what is, well, what's going on.
Very cool.
Question back gives an idea where the bigger unit, the more impactful units are.
Yeah, like this is, and then you, again, because it's dynamic, you can select, and it'll pull up, I should pull up another thing, but it'll pull up a blurb about the count. Yeah, something of such. Where the darker blues are the more permitted bedrooms. And then the very small ones, of course, it decides to redraw, are like one or two permitted bedrooms. And the vast majority of the short-term rentals are the one to two registered bedrooms. It's a very few that are the case where it's more than that. But there are some where it's like 12 or more. And it's a lot easier to see that in this than just sort through a spreadsheet.
But managing this type of data gives us, as opposed to a guess as to, well, it's this or it's that, it actually defines certainly so that as we're visualizing the extent of the penetration, it gives us a way to look at it as opposed to looking at flat information, a list on a sheet of paper doesn't give you the same ability to react to it or to understand it, more importantly. But I think the work that Patrick has been doing these last several months really did start with the electric department project, but there's so many different ways that this type of technology can benefit and provide information to the departments of the village and others that are working with various aspects of it. For example, in my mind, I have it in my mind that every parking place on Main Street could be identified. Every, the locations of our pay stations can be identified. The one question I have for you, Patrick, that I often come up with when I'm looking at Google Maps is that you'll get an aerial view, but it isn't always current. Tell me about, tell me why that happens.
So unfortunately, we're in an area that isn't in excessively high demand. For instance, if you go to any, I mean, even Albany has a great test of this is you go on like Google Earth if your city has been recreated in 3D. Unfortunately, Lake Placid really hasn't. Because it's not a major metropolitan area. And so we're not a high source of, essentially, there's not a lot of market for people to come very frequently to do a lot of that overhead imagery. However, one of the, I'll pull up the water apartment because it takes a lot less time to load because it's still new. The companies that I have kind of brought up and requested getting a contract with every year or every couple of years, and I think in 2021 or 2022, they hire companies to do aerial flybys. So they'll have a plane fly at neighborhood elevation, they'll have it fly at a couple hundred feet above that. And they'll be able to provide us with like very high-quality imagery that is very up-to-date. Like for instance, the current layer we have is from 2018 and granted, that's about two years ago versus Google's, which is 2014, 2015. So by having that, we're able to actually go in and look at information in a real-time, well, as close to real-time as we're going to be able to get. But unfortunately, it does kind of fall back on, there's a a lot of those service areas that just aren't as in demand. Like for instance, with the current imagery we have on, it'll pop in in a second. We can actually go in and identify like structures, vehicles. And one of the nice things about this is kind of going to, talking about parking, is we can create a utility network for sidewalks. And what that means is, we can create, just by using this, draw a line where all the sidewalks are. We can rate either by going out and surveying the sidewalks or just by imagery, like their conditions. Then we can come up with, oh, if we have a capacity of so-and-so based on where the short-term rentals are or where hotels and motels and other service industries are, what's most likely the streets people will use to get to Main Street? So we can help figure out what is the most highly trafficked areas, areas that might need repair sooner than others. And it's just another method to help track what's going on in the communities to help encourage, well, just communication. The other thing that's great about this is, we can develop, and I have one for the police department. So whenever they're going around, they have an app on their phone and it's it's working on being utilized more. It's still buggy. And if they see a street light out, they can use it to report a street light and that'll go directly to me. So I can then direct the electric department as to what we need to, you know, repair or replace or fix. And then eventually, we can get to a point where we can have something like that for community engagement. If there's possible, if there are other areas of interest. So that way, it's a way that we can receive that information from the public and interact with it in a meaningful way.
And community engagement is a discussion that's taking place and it's growing in terms of its importance. And our desire as local government to be able to reach out to all of the constituents that are, that use our services or systems and that is currently not, has not been available to us. We're spending a fair amount of time looking at government communications and how to expand that so that we can, and a broad issue of information can reach everybody in the community that needs to be reached. Right now, one of the mechanisms. Right now, one of the mechanisms that's showing some promise as a result of. Upgrading to a newer generation of our accounting system is that. We can, again, assuming the customers wish it, they'll provide us with a cell phone number or a email address. We're going to be able through that op system to, if if we have a power outage coming up, we can put a piece of information out. That'll go to every single user that's that that we can connect that information to. It's becoming more and more important and frankly, I'm 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 optimistic that. Some of the concerns that our members of our public have can be better addressed as 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 we continue to pursue technology. And this is certainly a major step forward, Dean. I think you probably have. Seen the most immediate value of it. But certainly operationally within our departments. And and the reason I ask the question about the timeliness of these maps is I can envision a time coming when perhaps we'll be able to. We have, we have a major storm problem, we have damage, the department will be able to visually go in and identify it right on the spot and know exactly what's going on. Which today we do by sending the truck and two men out to to investigate it. Then they have to come back and make whatever arrangements are needed for equipment to correct it. So all of this stuff has, looking forward, I think is going to have benefit to Lake Placid. And of course, when we're talking about utilities, we're not only talking about the village, we're we're talking about every user which goes. Really within the one, two, nine, four, six footprint. So there's, there's value in what we're doing here and. I'm I'm certainly sitting here very impressed with the progress that we're making so far. And we're very happy and lucky to have Patrick on board. Hopefully, we can keep him here for a while.
And as a.
Oh, I I agree one hundred percent. I appreciate all the work that you do, Patrick. It's, this is going to go a long way, increasing efficiency, but also making database decisions that will. Is, which is the only way to really make a decision nowadays, when you have the technology to back up and provide the information you need to make. The most efficient and effective decision possible. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments for Patrick? Art?
I believe he is muted.
You're you're muted, Art?
He's unmuted himself.
How's that? Yeah, in the beginning, when you were talking about the electric department, you brought up, you mentioned it shows you the accuracy of the picture. What what determines the accuracy?
Oh, well, so the accuracy of when we go out and locate something. That has several factors. For instance, the current device that we use, the Leica GGO four plus. Has in good conditions, centimeter accuracy. I think last Friday I was out grabbing something and marked some transformers within two to three centimeters. And which works fantastic. So that way, we can have accurate representations of where it is, we can calculate conduit lengths. But some of the major factors are, well, buildings. Just anything that can cause a disruption from us connecting to the network. How we get our accuracy is there is a a reference station in Raybrook. That we connect to over through Core's website. And as long as the device that we have or the tablet or phone, whatever we're using, has like 1G, 2G, 3G, or 4G. We are able to get that accuracy. If we lose that connection, for instance, out at the, near the lodge road. We go up to maybe fifteen feet sometimes. And no matter how good the device is, when you lose that connection. Which is why on the the EOS device that I proposed has some features that keep that accuracy even when you go into a dead zone. And make sure that it's a little bit easier for different users to connect to that GPS device. But unfortunately, it is, sometimes it is up to the flip of a coin. However, I have it set up so when you do record a point, it'll tell you how accurate it was, which is determined by its. Key, like the positional average of accuracy or something of such. As long as it's under two, we're great. And so far, all of our points have been within that threshold. And if they're not, there are areas that we can go back and recollect.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think it's fair to say there's more to come, Patrick, this as as time allows. And this also, it goes along with another project that our accounting department is doing, which is an update of the. Inventory of the very extensive items of equipment that the electric department has. That are mounted on poles, mounted on pads in the ground, in the ground, in the air. And it's, it's, we we maintain paper records to date. And all of this work is somewhat related in terms of the gathering of data and how it will be used in the future. But we are also improving the technology for tracking all of the equipment of that department so that we know what's on a pole. So when somebody goes out there, they don't have to go out and identify the 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 label on the transformer. They will use this type of technology. To expedite the knowledge they need of what repairs are going to be needed and necessarily what types of equipment they need to have on their truck. It's appears to.
Oh, most certainly. I mean, today in the office. I was helping steward spots identify some items and just being able to click on a pole and open up the street view. Versus being able or having to go out and drive, it saves him time. Whenever the guys go out and take pictures of a transformer during installation. Like such as over here in the Olympic Hills region. They take pictures of the company number, the faceplate, they take pictures of the inside of the transformer. And the other thing that helps us with is when we go out and inspect, we can identify and find faulty transformers that potentially have been leaking. So we can then take that information and do what we need to make sure that areas are as safe as can be. Yeah, like for instance, this transformer, I think I located this the other day. You can just click on it and, oh, golly. Oh, this was like the worst.
We had a little wind last night.
Yeah. And this is pulling up at a very high resolution. Oh, no. Well, trust me, it looks really good on the computer. There's one that's not so horrid. Oh, well, it's it's usually not as blown up, but it essentially lets people see what's going on and. What items at the time that the picture is taken. So whenever anyone goes back out, they can take an an updated. Picture of the asset. So we can then archive what something is. And even like, for instance, with this, you can see the condition of the transformer, if it needs a new coat of paint, if it needs a a new sticker. And we're able to have that information in a a visual and meaningful way.
And I guess the electric department gets to work out where there's mysteries and.
Oh, I can see they need paint on for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few of ones I I step back and take a picture because someone has planted trees like a foot around the transformer and you can't even open it. So it's a, it's hopeful.
Any other comments? Other than that, I I'll I'll thank Patrick for. And this is a day that we've been working toward for a while, we could actually display to the communities, done a bit. Some of the technology and how we're able to make use of it and and. Make the work that the village has to do. I think the term has been used is more efficient and certainly efficiency is. Means we could get more work done with less, sometimes less errors, or at least less loss of time. So Patrick, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
At this point, I'd like to move on to the second address of the evening, Dean. I think you're, this this is more of an update from the previous.
Yes, last time we were talking about moving forward with an RFP for land use code consultants. And there have been a number of changes that that require a plan B. One change is the town is facing a $600,000 budget deficit. Change two was the destination management plan. This brought back that Bruce is moving forward. Called into question how the land use code would fit more with a comprehensive plan effort. So we're looking at at some some changes that are taking place. So two of the financing changes and the destination management plan coming coming online. There are some, there are some, there are some changes in what we are proposing to do. We've had a series of meetings now with, I met with Craig and Jay twice, I believe, since since the last time I talked to you. One of them was with Jim McKenna and Mary Jane, I want to say, or it's Lawrence. Mary Jane Lawrence regarding how the comprehensive, how the DMP fits with the comprehensive plan. I've also met with the development commission, I've also met with Greg Oats from NEXOM, who was who was the consultant for the DMP. And this is what we have come up with. And we think we're going to move forward here. Basically, we are giving up on the RFP for a land use code consultant. And we are going to try to make the changes to a land use code in-house. We are still maintaining the basic structure. So the way it goes is, you know, you do a comprehensive plan, you do a land use code, you do a comprehensive plan, you do a land use code, you do a comprehensive plan. So we're building off of the comprehensive plan that was done in twenty fourteen, twenty, the land use code was done in twenty eleven. Comprehensive plan was done in twenty fourteen and it has been upgraded a number of times. I shouldn't say it's been upgraded as much as been amended or or visions have been added to the comprehensive plan. So it's it's six years old, but it's not like it's dated, it still exists and we still have a lot of visions. From from those efforts that would fit, that fit into the effort to draw, to create a new land use code. We had a number of public, hours of public meetings about STRs, that's going to be a big thing for the reedition. We've had a, we've had a series of, we did some things with the events, we've had public forums for events. We've had housing forums and forums for STR that the development commission has has created. Probably a hundred thirty, a hundred forty people were involved in each one of those. We've also done visioning statements, and these have been related to visioning statements from a consultant that have related down to stakeholder groups. But it has to do with the arts, trails and trails connections, communication, GPS, the efficiency of government. The different parks and most, one of the more recent one was a vision that was done with the Adirondack Park Agency Economic Council. Thought what we could do with gateway corridors to 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 deal with next use. So the bottom line is, the comprehensive plan now is good enough to move forward with the land use code. By getting away with, we feel. We we, by getting away from the consultant, we are giving up a few things. We are saying, one of the things we want to do in a few areas was to ask a consultant, go out, find industry standards for things. One of, one of the items, for instance, would be solar farms. We know, we know in the comprehensive plan, we want to increase green energy, we want to, we want to talk about solar farms in our area. It's not in our land use code. So one of the things that will have to happen if we do it in-house is the the people in-house will have to find on their own. More information about how you screen, how you deep condition, what you what you do with solar farms. We feel we can still pretty much do an adequate job with that as long as we have an adequate support mechanism. So now I'm getting to the, to the, the paper that you have in front of you, the land use code, the move forward. Without a consultant, but we would still have a fairly strong infrastructure. For one, the town, the town is still moving forward with the development director, creating that position. I meet with them Wednesday. The development director would would do a lot of the work, quite frankly, that that we did last time with the land use code, which is the typing, the cutting, the pasting, the grammar. Just just actually cutting and pasting and changing the language on a piece of paper. That, a lot of that grunt work would be done by the development. We do have a mapping capacity, so we can draw new districts pretty easily, and you just saw how we can do that. Draw a circle anywhere we want, make a, make an oval. So we have the mapping capacity, we'd be asking the village to kind of donate Patrick's services as much as we need. We wouldn't need a selected revised budget, we would not be talking about $50,000. We would still need some minor things, we have to make sure the development director has a computer with the software that that is capable of making the changes we need to to make. We need, we would need a few things for public presentations. A hundred bucks for public presentations. I did, I did have a call into Tim Smith. We would not have a consultant, we'd have a legal department to do a review, we'd be asking him to take on more of a legal review. I've shared with him our internal scoping, he's going to get back to me. I don't think it would be a huge expense, but I think if we're asking him to do extra, I think it's only fair that we ask him how much he thinks it would be to do that extra work. I still don't anticipate a budget more than a few thousand dollars for the printing, for all the changes that we would make. We would then, we, you know, the group has pretty much completed our internal scoping. Did that, did that in a pretty good, pretty effectively before we put out the RFP. We think we can do that by January, which means that when we get the development director on board, we do the external scoping. And that involves developing a presentation and the, instead of the consultant doing the presentations to the different stakeholder groups. We would, so we do a general public forum is what we're asking a consultant to do. For one, that would have a general one, one would particularly be targeted with residential interests. Here's how our STR and housing things would affect your, particularly in the neighborhood. One that would target commercial interests and one that would target, target shoreline. And people, of course, can come to all four of them, they can come to one, they can do what they want, but it'd be slightly different presentations. Based on that, we changed the internal scoping, we created a draft document. We, that's where Tim's services would come in with any language changes we would need. And that's where the development director would come in as we move things around and add things, of course, the citations change, the paragraphing changes. All those kinds of things change, and that grunt work would be done by the development director. We believe, talking to the land use code committee, I don't know if that's, that's happened a couple times too. We believe that we can get that done by October, November of this year. And which would mean that you could have a public hearing and adoption next fall and we were shooting for a January first, twenty twenty-one effect.
You mean twenty-two, right?
Twenty twenty-two, yeah. No, that's twenty twenty-one, that's next year. Oh, no, you're right, twenty twenty-two. Whoops.
Safe.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. So we'd be moving forward with it by next January. We think we can do it here. And that would be, and that group is a very, is, we're starting to continue, I have, you know. Given the fact that your, your job description is changing. Are you willing to take on the load and there's, so Bill Billerman, Jackie Kelly, Liz Clark, Dan Keller. Brett, I should, Mike Garnachelli, Tim Smith, and they all said they were willing to continue on, so.
Question, why did you give up on the RFP?
There were some, there were questions, spending money in terms of the the town particularly. And if they would spend money on the development director, we could probably still do this and we might have a little bit more. You know, we'd have, we'd be putting ourselves in a better position for the future. We can get a development director on board for fifty thousand dollars. He's saving, I mean, that fifty thousand dollars is for a development director. He's, he's basically earning his keep the first year. We do a comprehensive plan and he helps and finds Brett, he's earning his keep the second year. Plus, we're in a position to move forward because we have a guy, a person in-house. So that's basically what we got.
This is, depends who the higher raise, I guess.
You have to done it. And that, you're right, that's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be very critical. And the first year of getting him on board is going to be critical here. The land, as we were proposing this and as we looked at, as we went our way through the internal scoping. Much of it is, is things that we would have just told the consultant to do anyway. So in terms of signs, we know we want to change, we want to, we want to change the way we measure wall size to divide the, to devise, to divide the artistic. to divide the artistic part, that there is an artwork part from the language part. We know that we want to change to have, to have land language that deals with the LED signs. We still, we know we want a limited number of LED signs, you know, the new open signs. Uh, we have to change, may have to change the size to accommodate what the industry standards are for those. Uh, we know we want to change, we want to limit the personal statement signs you can put on your lawn. We know we want to change to about the, make them about the size of a regular political sign. So a block five's matter sign or something like that should be, we have to allow people to do that, but we don't want it on a, on a four by eight sheet plywood spray paint. And so, so we know what we want and a lot of the things, we go through our internal scoping. A lot of things we would have just told the consultant is what we want to do. And in fact, Tim had a lot of language, uh, much language from what we wanted. Uh, we know pretty much what we want to do in terms of short-term rentals. Based on, based on the public hearings, we know we want it to be commercial enterprises. We know we want to push into the corridors. We know we want to, we want to reduce that, reduce their footprint on the, in the residential lands. We know that. And there are not a whole lot of ways you can do that. We're pretty much confident, know it. We're in, in, in being able to bring a plan to the community for the public information here and see what they say about our plan. So we feel we can go forward and use the money better.
Contempt, if you try to redistrict areas of the village or town, that's where the contempt is.
Well, it's, you know, one of the things we found out, yeah, it is. But one of the things we found out is we probably won't have to do that. And if you look at the GIS map, we were very concerned with some areas. I don't want to get, get too far down the road here, but, uh, Johnson Avenue was one of the areas where the village and town line goes through. You look at the GIS map, there's, there's, if we're, if we're going to reduce, in, in other words, if we're going to reduce or take away the ability to rent there, it's a very minimal impact. We don't, we don't think, based on our internal scoping, we don't think we're going to do a lot of redistricting. Thank you. We get it. That answers your question. Well, we'll take that to the, we'll take that, that's what we're planning to do to the people.
And it goes to the public hearing.
It goes, it goes through a series of public informational hearings and then it goes to, uh, Jason's got his hand up.
Yeah. It's a whole, uh, the school thing. I just, um, uh, the development director, although it's a town-created position, it seems to be they're going to be supporting a sort of a, a 12946 agenda. Uh, is there going to be any sort of conflicts, uh, like, uh, or, uh, within their, uh, position structure, a sort of a prioritization of town of North Elba issues or needs that may, uh, impact the, uh, the overall move forward with this progress, the process?
We're looking at it as the development commission. And I think we've got a pretty good job managing the needs of the, the village and the community. And if you look at it, the development, I like to do more with the village than we do with the town. Because you guys have the infrastructure, you know, we're involved in the Main Street project a couple of times. You have guys have the infrastructure. You had the court that was going to, that we were talking about. Um, and I, I don't see that changing. And, and the way we're trying to create, that's a different kettle of fish. But, but the way we're trying to create the, the development position with the town is that it works through the development commission. So just like you can ask us what to do, you can ask the development director to do what to do through the development. So we're, we're trying to, we understand what you're saying and I can't tell you, there's never going to be, uh, a difference of opinion between the town and village. But, uh, we work our way through that as much as, as, as best we can. And everybody benefits. We can't lose sight of the fact that the 2,000 people that live in the village also live in the town.
Certainly.
Yes, it's their voter, their town voters too. So the town's got to, got to, got to do what they want to do. And we built into the structure, you, the liaisons that you have in the development commission. Basically, we'd oversee the development director. So there was a liaison from the village and town. But basically, what the development commission has done so far is if the towns is, were interested in something, the village says we're not. We, we generally got it. It hasn't happened very often, but we've got a different direction.
Okay, thank you.
I can't guarantee it'll work, but it's worked so far for the last six years. So that would be the land use code. We get that done. Now, in the meantime, uh, you've heard from Roost about the, about the destination management plan. And the, the key is how, the question is how to fit the destination management plan in with the comprehensive. And we want to avoid two things. We want to avoid, we, we want to avoid the conflict that you're talking about between the destination management plan and, and the comprehensive plan. We want to make sure that they're all lined up and moving forward. And the relationship between the destination management plan and the comprehensive plan is, is, is like a Venn diagram. A lot of what's going to be in the destination management plan, it will fit into the comprehensive plan. Some of it is marketing, how, how do you market to, uh, you know, how do you market to Rochester? That's not going to fit into comprehensive. But one way to look at the destination management plan, it is like the public hearings we had on short-term rentals. It will develop a vision that the community will have about events. It will develop a vision that the community will have about housing. It, it will develop about mobile, about mobility plans. So a lot of those, it, it is a visioning process that fits into the comprehensive plan. And, and it, it's not the entire comprehensive plan, but it moves that direction. So the idea that we're at, I think, is start out with the small one, get that done and then expand. And that way you avoid, you avoid duplication of effort. Because you're, you're building on the data that the development, that the destination management plan has already created. And one way to keep the continuity then is that the destination management plan is not going to be Jim McKenna and Mary Jane, Jim McKenna, Roost, and, and Greg Oates. And so, look, the destination management plan then will, will place that at steering committee as part of its management team, people from the development commission. So in other words, you will have the same people, if you go down this star, a lot of the same people will be in, be in the steering commission. Steering committee of this effort will continue on with this effort. So the idea is you, you build in continuity by having continuity in the management. And if you have continuity in the management, you, you can, you can see, you can see the problem. And the other, the other feature we should keep in mind is that probably, given the fact that the destination management plan is supposed to be what the community wants and builds and is, as a, as a, you know, from the bottom up kind of process, uh, there should not be a lot of conflicts. It will do other things. But, but what the community thinks about mobility and sidewalk connections is what the community is going to think about community and sidewalk connections. Uh, and, you know, so, so they're, I, I can't, and they're going to, they're going to have the same process that we have. Uh, and, and we won't be duplicating that process. We do that one first and then expand out and create the new, the new packs of committees. I'm not too sure I clarified that. If that's clear, it's clear in my mind. Uh, but basically what would happen is you go forward with the destination management plan. For the destination management plan was completed. Basically, the, the North Elba Development Commission would keep on moving. We'd have at least three or four representatives that, that were the same on each committee. And we move forward with a comprehensive plan. If you get a comprehensive plan, we'd probably start up, you know, the destination management plan is now considered to be, last I talked to Mr. Oates, it is now an eight-month project. So it's not going to be done in July, but October. So you can slide those two charts down a little bit. But, you know, next fall, we'd be firing up the comprehensive plan. That also gives a development director eight months to find a grant source for the comprehensive plans. We can, he or she can feather their own nest and earn their keep again. So we're hoping this drastically reduces the cost of both the village and town. And it, and it kind of, it puts the two, it, it puts the two initiatives in a way that they don't compete with each other, but build upon each other.
Dean, one of our meetings, you mentioned that, uh, there were grants available for comprehensive planning currently because a lot of our grant sources seem to be, uh, flooding water at the moment.
That's, that's one of the few areas where they, they seem to still be around. I, I can't predict what's going to happen in next year. This year, there were still a number of grants for comprehensive plans. Um, yeah, there was, they, those were still, they still want you to plan so that what the money you spend is well-spent. But, but they're not going to help you spend a lot of money. Not going to get a lot of money to spend. But they do want you to, to get things ready so that you can move forward when the time comes.
And of course, mingled with all of this is that we, we, we still have a high hope that work we did on the Clarkson Grant this summer is going to produce something.
I, I, working at another, I, I missed the last meeting you were there. Were you on Fridays? I did, I, I did not go on Friday.
No, I missed Friday.
Yeah, I had, I had my painting job. But I, I don't know exactly what it stands, but it's the same thing. It's, uh, that would be a, that is also, that's kind of like the destination manager. And that's going to be a, a mini mobility plan. And we, and the comprehensive plan will build upon that.
I, I think when I was working with Eric Backus, we were talking about, I mean, that, that, that can become an umbrella program over almost all of the major upcoming mobility issues that the village, or sorry, Lake Placid will have, um, including parking, traffic flows. If we add, uh, if we add the proposed housing development on the, on the cell center site and the 60-odd living units on West Valley and some others that are, are smaller projects, um, all of a sudden, we're facing some growing need for, uh, a lot more mobility planning than what we currently are doing. And, uh, let's face it, I think everybody is looking for more housing. That's, those, those are tremendous opportunities to relieve the pressure on the community. But it will, uh, it will make our little Main Street, um, I think, almost competent. It's going to make it a lot more, uh, busy. And we need, we, we need, uh, we need to plan well beyond where we are today.
As I just said in Patrick's statement about sidewalks, there, one of the things that the lead people did is work with the ANCA to do a community discussion. I don't know if a lot of people from Lake Placid or 25 or 30 community members were part of that discussion. And what came out of that was the need for sidewalks more than anything else. We really, which really amazed me. We, we, we need people to be able to walk from West Valley. Need to be able to walk from the cell science center to Hannaford or Price Jumper. And that would alleviate a lot of things. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, we certainly, you know, given the limited resources of Main Street, and, and we do want, uh, more, more people walking. But, and, and certainly that doesn't diminish the ongoing
No.
efforts that we're putting in to create additional parking places where we can.
Absolutely.
But this mobility plan has some potential for reaching some of the bigger projects that are beyond, or should be beyond the, call it the village taxpayer.
You're, I, I present correctly. So I'm not saying we should do it all sidewalks, of course. You still need, need shuttle services and those kind of things.
Certainly, certainly in the regions of the Olympic Center and West Valley becomes more of a theater of, of a population center.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's sidewalks. I think it's going to, maybe will drive us to the point where we'll get a little more neighborhood public transportation, um, which there are members of our community that would love to have that today. Setting aside COVID.
And the interesting about the NSF, the fact that it's going through the Science Foundation, they're looking for innovative, energy-efficient, zero-carbon ways to do it. So it's got to be a process.
And I think given the setting that we're in with the upcoming university games, uh, and some of the things that we hope to, uh, will materialize from that, uh, clearly, clearly that can be used to leverage some improvement in the carbon footprint, which a few years ago, when I first heard we needed to reduce that, I'm going like, wait a minute. The only way we could get around the adirondacks is by, uh, public vehicle or, or vehicles. And, and yet today, I think we're all, and this is only a few years later, are all beginning to realize that, uh, the management of carbon is, is, is a, a challenge.
And I get to get back here, I don't want to get too far off track. And eventually you have to approve the land use code after public hearing. I believe that Roost is going to ask you to adopt the destination management plan. And of course you approve the comprehensive plan. So you, you're, I, I'm not asking for anything this evening, other than comments in this process. If you have any comments, you think we're way off base, let us know so we can, we can take a look at that. But it looks to me like the conversations, as I said, that we're having between Roost and, and the village and the town, it looks like we're moving this direction. Just, so I don't know, this is as much as informative, I guess, as asking for anything. You know, unless you want me to go a different direction.
I think we have some, I think the village will have some concerns. I, I, I'm, I'm looking at the development director and it's really been very little conversation with the village board about, about that position or its design. I'm always reminded of the fact that, uh, we, we share a comprehensive plan, we share a land use code. And, uh, from my perspective as a mayor, I think it's terribly important that any development officer that's going to be working with them, push them to the village. We, we need to have, uh, innocent direct lines of communication that I don't see at the, at the moment in time. But we can work on that.
I think we did establish some direct line of communication with the liaison, I believe. Uh, and the fact that they'd be working under the guidance or the direction of the development commission. Um, the, there, the difference would be when it comes, and, and you, and of course, town board, the town and village board, you and the village board have, have direct access. I mean, the development commission, the leader appointings, uh, you know, we. That is basically joint appointed, so you can, you can get rid of them. The, the, you're right, at some point in time, someone is paying, someone's got to pay the, you can't really, very difficult to have somebody hired with two bosses.
Well, and, and, and the example there is, is that the resource that will pay this position or compensate this position is the fees from the short-term rental program. Those are largely, probably 60, 70% are generated from within the village.
Yeah.
Yet we've had no, uh, no request or even requested to consider that. But my, my feeling is that the village, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but we do, we, we, we do work under home rule here. And, uh, the question is whether or not this structure is adequate to protect the village in the future from not having the necessary controls that it probably should have. And I'm only saying that because I think this is a discussion and there should be an understanding. I wouldn't want somebody a year from now to say, well, this person's hired, but it, it, the understanding was never made clear. So I think it's important. Um, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, of developing a resource for Lake Placid that makes sense.
And I, all I could say is that I'm, I think the plans for the development, the development director will be, I mean, practices, be kind of be finalized. That doesn't matter too much in terms of, you still want the same person. You still want a person who's got a planning background who does it. Um, I would be happy at that point in time to come in at your next meeting and, and talk to you in greater detail about, I think I gave you this organizational chart at some point.
Yeah. And, and, and that's what started my concerns.
So, uh, I'd be happy to, to, to talk to you, if you want to, we could talk about it now. I'm not sure everybody has this chart and knows.
Uh, no, I think, uh, I think we can, we can take that up. I, I, I don't think this, I don't, I don't think we're ready to publish this position yet. But I, I see stuff as beginning to materialize, so sooner or later, that's going to be.
We're hoping to be able to be ready to publish the position after next, next weekend. Well, you're right, it's been mostly a talent. You know, because the town is the people who are, who are putting in their budget to hire the person that's really coming out of the town.
But yet the resources are largely coming out of the village.
And I think part of the concern is the current zoning office does not report to this body at all, although we share it. And that needs to change. And it would be very bad, because as Peter said, one of the key things here is going to be, who's this community development director? And, and although it does say here that they'll attend village board meetings on a regular basis, I think that would be key.
Yeah.
And we don't get any feedback from upstairs now, although I think the mayor and the supervisor.
I think this week I should actually change that so that next time around, I think, I think this discussion may, it's going to change that.
And, you know, it, it is very hard. You can't please two bosses. And where do you usually have your focus? The groups that attach a paycheck.
Well, yes and no, because in this particular case, most of, like I say, most of the work, the appearance committee, chairing the appearance committee, 90% of that works in the village. Uh, you know, the things we've done on Main Street is, is, is in the village. Uh, it's, it's, and the reason it has to go to the town is that the village is part of the town. So you would include the village if you had a town. But if you have a village, the town is exclusive of the village. So you got to, you kind of have to push that.
I think the whole idea of the funds for the short-term rental, where, where they're generated, it, it's the same old argument, you know, North Elba has with Essex County. Where does most of Essex County sales tax come from, North Elba? So should we have a say in things? Absolutely. So should we have a say in things? Absolutely. I think you can just take it down to this level here. Most of the short-term rental income, or a big chunk of it for sure, is coming from village properties. And so the village just wants to have, you know, that's money generated from the village, so it should stay in part in the village. And I agree with you, Dean, that we have to look at it as the whole community, just not the village. But the question is, and this has been driven by the town and, and the commission, and the village has very little input into it, and it's evolved, and that's a good thing. It, it, you know, first it was this housing, it was a housing coordinator, and now it's been refocused and, and it's, but I think the key is, who's this person going to be? Do they understand this flow chart of things? Quite frankly, I don't know what kind of expertise you get for the salary that's being offered. But we'll see.
We'll see.
And I think we have to, I think the Village Board would like to be involved in the interview process, the hiring process, not just the liaisons, but I think everybody. And that seems a little cumbersome and a little clumsy, but I think that'll, that's the way it's probably going to hopefully work. That's my two cents.
Yeah. So we have, I mean, we have had conversations with the plan, we have the liaison, so. And we under, we understand the basic governance issue. First time I heard you want to be involved, and also be involved in the hiring process, and I'll certainly take that under advisement. See what the Town Board says tomorrow. But we can certainly do that. And I don't know if you want to do that, you're talking about doing that with the entire board, or representing us with the board?
On the part of the mayor, but I think we want to have the resume, maybe, I, a normal hiring practice goes, you get resumes in. Definitely not, maybes, definitely. And I think, we, we don't need to see the definitely nots, but I think the board would like to be involved in the, this is who, this is our top three, here's the resumes, and take it from there.
We, we actually are building into the process an interview. We want to have an interview.
Oh, absolutely.
And the interview, and part of that would be, we had to assume the, the lead, the committee, the committee now is a village representative, a town representative, and then Peter Rowland, who lives in the village, myself, who live in the town, and Kate Compton, who lives in the village. So those would be, those are the representatives that we have on that committee at this point in time. So if you want another board.
Which, which, which committee is that now?
That's the committee that's working on the director position.
Okay, I didn't know that we'd have a committee assigned for that function. I, I think.
Yeah, it's been your liaison. And like I said, the, the reason for that committee is because we, we saw this person having a number of portfolios, and Kate is working on the communications portfolio. The other portfolio, this guy will be this person. For margin, I got to step in a sexist way. This person would be, would be carrying, would be housing. And so Peter Rowland was involved with the starter group, with the housing separate way back in twenty-eleven, the Comprehensive Plan, he was part of the housing group. So Peter was asked to do it, and of course, this person would be taking over my duties, so, so I would be doing it also. So that was the group we had, and it is, like I say, it's got three village people. Makes me have to think my.
Dean, one thing that I would add, when we're talking about the hiring process, when Mike Ordesselli was hired in code enforcement, the town had the interviews, but there were two representatives from Lake Placid, I believe it was Craig and I, sat through every interview. I would assume they would probably do the same format. That worked really well last time.
So I, I, in my mind, I had one representative, but if you, like I say, if you want two representatives or the entire board, that's, that could be built in for sure.
Well, the whole idea of two representatives from the village, it doesn't become a, a meeting. You don't have the restrictions of having to plan the meeting two weeks in advance, and if something comes up, public notice it again. That was the flexibility that was used last time.
I think it's very important. It sends the message right at the very beginning that the village is a very big player in your role. So if you're sitting there taking the interview with some people from the village, it sends the message that, yeah, these are your bosses. These are the people you have to answer to. So it's a message we want to send immediately. So that's, I'm certainly open to that.
So Mayor, if I, I might ask, so the, we, the, the funding for this position is coming from the short-term rental revenue, which we haven't really decided how we're going to, for a lack of a better phrase, divvy ups to, to know what is generated by the village, what is generated by the town. So we're, in essence, funding this position, although we are part of, what I'm hearing is part of the interview process. The, the component, I think, that I alluded to earlier is the oversight, the sort of, the, the, I would say, the ability to have oversight built into the position, not out of a, what's the word I'm looking for? Instead of just being polite as a way, I guess, for a lack of a better term, we have a legitimate oversight on this position. Are we, are we diving, am I diving too deep into the weeds with this particular situation? Because I see the value of the position and how it's going to facilitate a substantial amount of work that One Two Nine Four Six needs. But it, to me, like on the surface, it looks like another code enforcement situation prior to Mike, where we, it's a position that exists that we share, but we have no oversight, no, no accountability. The position doesn't have any accountability to the board or the mayor.
Your mayor's objective at the moment is to try to put that oversight relationship in place, and, you know, you're, you and the other board members were aware of the fact that I was working with Mike. I did get Mike to come. He gave a report, which is very, very beneficial to this board in terms of understanding what changes are taking place in the village in terms of new developments. We're usually the last to hear. And fortunately, that doesn't help us sometimes when we're trying to learn about directions. And we're going through some fairly dynamic changes in the village, even, even right now. And it isn't just the short-term rental effects of legislation or, or work that remains to be done, but it's, it's real-life things that are going on in the community. Janet has spoken to me briefly about how hot our local real estate market is, so one would assume that was vacation rentals, but you would be wrong. In fact, what's happening is a number of families, apparently, are engaging in the purchase of homes in Lake Placid. They are moving their families here. They're becoming full-time residents of the village. They're working remotely, which is really, this is, this is, this is a change that has only started to evolve in, in the last, I, I would guess, maybe three months, four months in our community. And without the knowledge of, of property transfers, without the knowledge of building permits, and, and certainly we wanted to keep up to date on what the short-term rental compliance program was producing in that office, without, without those direct connections to the village, we weren't getting them. And, and frankly, the, the town supervisor was, understood the issue, Mike understood the issue, and I think he will continue to be a regular participant in our work sessions going forward, at least once a month. Or as often as our board wants to hear from him. And I, I, I'm doing a lot of this right now, but I'm painfully aware of the fact that there'll be a change in leadership in this board in, in maybe a little less than five months, maybe five months. And I, 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 these are just things that I'm sensing and feeling that sometimes the discussion's a little bit awkward, but I'm trying to get it out there and see if we can accomplish some improvements here, and, and this is as big a part of communications as anything else that we're looking at in terms of how we communicate with our constituents. Does that help?
Sure. Yes, I was, it, it seems to be an ongoing process, and there's going to be more dialogue to follow, for sure.
And Jason, I just jumped in here for a second. The STR rental income, if you want to call it that, that's going first to pay host compliances contract. There will be, there, there will be money left over based on the money, the money that's been received. So the Town Board does feel, based on that information, that this position could be paid, including benefits, totally out of that income, based on what there is this year. Now, you remember that these permits are for two years. So we know what the, so there'll probably be some rolling new sign-ups, but I think the Town Board is comfortable enough now that they will not be asking the Village Board to contribute any part of our budget to the cost of this person.
But, but that's very kind of them.
Well, I think, I think I would add also that for the three years we've been working on this, we knew from the get-go that the village could not receive these funds, that it had to be the town. So that's not anything new here. It's just having some say in what's going on. It was never the idea that the village generated seventy percent and would get seventy percent of the money. It was always known that it would have to go to the town legally.
Yeah, I, no, I, I agree. It just, when I say we haven't had a discussion as to how the, say, the above and beyond sort of revenue, it's not going to the village per se, but a way for it to, and, and in some respects, come to the village is the village having oversight as how it is spent. And we, as of right now, don't really have that. And that's, I guess that's a discussion for a different time. Getting, getting something passed, I guess, was the, the primary concern. Now that something has passed, now this is another subject that can be addressed at a later time. It just seems this position is instigating that conversation, but we can come back to it at another time.
You were searching for a word earlier, Jason. I think the word is faith.
Oh, it was courtesy.
The town, courtesy, but I think also the word is faith. I think we have to use some faith that the town is going to take this money, realize where it's coming from, and spread it out amongst the village and the town, but that yet to be, to be received. We'll see what happens.
We have to have a seat at the table all the time.
I agree, Peter, and I do, I do respect the supervisor and the Town Board members for sure. And I just, just echoing Peter's sentiment is, having a seat at the table, I think, is the least that could be done.
If you look at the flow chart, that, that is there. I mean, you can see that the village and the town are, are there on equal headed. Very much like it is now that it's a volunteer organization. It's just that in the end, they will be the final say as for where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I, I, I really hate to belabor this particular conversation, because there have been multiple examples of instances that the town has moved forward with certain items without, I would say, extensive conversation with the village, which has kind of created a sort of a, a back and forth. Minor, for sure, but just moving forward, this would be something that maybe the mayor and supervisor can hash out, or the two boards moving forward, for sure.
Good topic. More to come, I believe. Could be a fair place to leave this topic at the moment. Anything else, Dean, that you wanted to add to your presentation?
Yes, and again, I'm not asking for any kind of resolution, just to, just to keep you informed that this is, this looks like the way we're moving forward. If I don't see any real objections, we'll continue working on it.
Okay. Well, I think it was, I, I think the discussion's useful, and, and you know, as you, you, you're hearing, you're hearing from the board directly that, you know, there's, there's a way forward, I believe, but, but there's some cautions that the village wants to build into the process. Any, any, any other trustee wish to comment? If not, I thank you very much, Dean and Patrick, this evening. You certainly made for a interesting evening as far as content.
Yeah, I think one of the things that will happen in, in two years, you'll have a full-time Development Director, you'll have a brand-new comprehensive plan, fill out a new land use code. So in, in a year, we, we, I think we've positioned, Eric, you've positioned yourself in a moving forward in a very positive way.
Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dean. Always the goal, perfection, sometimes.
That's what I'm intending to consequence.
That's correct. Okay, we'll move on to the regular items on the agenda tonight. We have the minutes of the last board meeting, October nineteenth. The gentlemen are welcome to stay.
I have a bead soup for you, bead soup for me.
So moved.
Back in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We have a motion in a second.
Jason and.
All in favor of the copy of the minutes is presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are good. The next item we have on the sheet, and you all have a copy of a letter from Ivan Zikral, who's an engineer on the Main Street work, together with a proposed notice of award, which will be executed based upon this board's decisions this evening. The letter from, from the, from Ivan is tabulating, has tabulated the results of the bids for the Main Street project. Looking at the base bid, they run from a, so they run from a lower bid of ten million, thirty-five thousand dollars to a high bid of fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one, as you can all see. There is an alternate A, and the difference between A and the base literally is a decision that this board can make in the months ahead. But it involves the differences to whether we use a, a really fine granite stone for the future sidewalk of Main Street, or we go with, with a Tabor Stone product. And as you can see, there's a significant difference in, in the cost of the product. And that's the primary, that's the primary difference between base bid and base alternate A.
Craig, if I could throw in one thing there. Granite was always the most cost-effective product. It was always going to hold up the best, last the longest. But the problem was, was the state wouldn't allow you to write it off in anything longer than ten years, so that made it cost prohibitive at the time. Now, with the Main Street project having a thirty-year loan, that all of a sudden puts granite in the spotlight. It looks higher at the time, but I think in the long run, you're going to be very happy with the product. And if you want an example of what it looks like, I believe the stairs at Mids Park are the granite we're talking about.
Thank you for that. And you are, you are correct in that sense, the difference here. The Mirror Lake Sidewalk, even considering that product, given the time span that we had to amortize it, was, was ten years or less. Whereas in this case, it's based upon the scope of the entire project, and it has a much longer amortization window. And I might add that granite will last, will way outlast any other product we could look at. So.
We appreciate it.
Yes. So the, the recommendation is contained in the letter. He recommends that the Village Board award the construction contract to Kubricki Construction Corporation for the amount of the base bid of ten million, thirty-five thousand, fourteen dollars. The village will reserve the right to choose the option for bid alternate A in the amount of nine million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, fourteen dollars at a later date. And then, and then you have a copy of the notice of award. So the motion this evening, if someone would choose to put it on the table, would be to accept the base bid of the lowest, of the low bidder, which is Kubricki Construction Corporation, and authorize the mayor to execute the notice of award, recognizing that, and reserving for a future decision. The village's option to select bid alternate A looking ahead. This is a really momentous decision. This is a really momentous decision. It's got, like, Peter, at least five years worth of, worth of effort in it. And it's a project that will easily support the village for easily 25, 30-year, or even 40-year time period ahead. That is, is what we expect to get out of it.
The underground water line should be under years. It only lasts a hundred.
That, that is correct. Not only, not only, not only will it, will we look forward to that longevity, it also allows us to, as, as the community has grown and as needs for water delivery are expanding, it allows us the ability to move more water where the demand is requiring it. And I. Yes, I would just want to start, and that is that we only have to look back at 2016, I believe, the year of the fire on Main Street, to know that we were pushing our water utility resources pretty much to the limit that night, based on the size of the lines that are currently under the street. Art, you wanted to add something?
It was Jason. I was just, if I may, wanted to just preface the whole thing by saying, this, didn't this start with the fact that we were attempting to save Mirror Lake? And it started with reconfiguring the, the lines underneath? And then that was the opportunity that a larger project grew from this? So at, at its heart, it's protecting Mirror Lake, which we know is absolutely critical.
Well, yes, the community has made it clear that we need to take steps to reduce the contamination that stormwater currently dumps into the lake. And this project has contained within it the, not only the upgraded water main for certain continued service and renewal of the line that is over 100 years old, also contains the upgraded stormwater management systems that are necessary to process stormwater and strip it of as much as possible before, before it reaches any of our watersheds, recognizing that this is a benefit to everyone. And then finally, it upgrades a Main Street surface as it's refinished, that I'm sure most people today would, would say that our current Main Street condition is worn out. The crosswalks are sinking into the pavement. There's bird baths at every entrance to a crosswalk in a storm. There is flooding of stormwater into some of our store, store buildings on occasion when, when, when some of the heavier storms are hitting. And then finally, most important, the community at least, it is recognizing the needs of our people and our senior citizens in particular with safer sidewalk, crosswalk treatments, sidewalks that are on a level plane. It's really gratifying to hear people say that the replacement sidewalk around Mirror Lake is a pleasure to walk on because you can walk and not have to be watching where you're putting your feet with every step. So there is a lot in it. This is a big project. The funding sources for it are in the form of grant funding, some of it's green initiative, which will help when, in two weeks' time, we put out the, a work that our subcommittee of the Main Street is working on, which will be a visual display of this project, including some of the improvements that I've outlined here verbally. So that is where we are at. Janet, do you have any comments? There are, there are some unfinished pieces on this. The project is not, and it probably won't be clear to proceed until a little bit later on. That involves.
I just talked to Ivan today. And I think, I think the little pieces that need to come together will come together. But in the meantime, awarding the bid, and then there's a lot of planning and mobile, well, not at this point mobilization, but there's certainly a lot of planning that has to be done before they can start anything. So he didn't think there was any danger in the pieces that need to come together coming together, not coming together.
Not coming together.
Because of the ongoing dialogue between the two.
Yeah, fireless.
Yeah.
Any, I certainly invite, invite any, any of our trustees that want to speak to this issue and recommendations before we bring it to the table. If not, I will ask for a motion, accepting the recommendation of our engineer to award this bid to Kubricki, reserving the right, as he's outlined in his recommendation, on alternate A for a later time.
So moved.
Is there a second? Further discussion? If not, we'll call a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please indicate. Any extensions, please indicate. So the motion is passed, and this community will, will move forward with this project, recognizing that there still is some steps up there that are being worked on. And my intention is that the Main Street, I don't know what we call them, a discussion group, task force, will, will hopefully continue to agree to serve throughout the term of this, because I'd like, I'd like very much to see an active relationship between the contractor when this project does in fact get underway and our community people, so that we can address issues that may not have come up in the initial planning.
Mayor, I think it would be very, very important for us to mention that part of this process requires the contractor have a presence on Main Street so that those who own businesses or interact on Main Street do have an opportunity to interact with the contractor and be able to give feedback.
That was the, the point of my discussion. The asset group, which is largely made, which is significantly made up with some Main Street people, would, would continue to serve on that, in that capacity.
I think, Craig, though, what Jason was mentioning is that it is in the contract that Kubricki will have a liaison to help with Main Street, correct?
It's what we put into the contract that will make it, we can, we can do that. And, and actually, I would suggest that we, we worded it in such a way that he works with the village and, and it's Main Street, or I don't know, I want to isolate it to Main Street, and its community leadership on this project. We'll have to figure out how to word that, so it's useful.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, it's amazing, for all the hours of work that have gone into this, that the, that this step is almost, it's a momentous step. And it's taken a minute. It's almost now, you're right, Peter. Okay, moving on, I'm going to ask our clerk to explain the next step, which is, which is a required step we have to engage in.
Well, this is the service agreement with the agency that the town and village are both hoping to contract with for the, I don't know, state mandated.
Thank you, Janet. The governor has, there's an executive order, a law that each community has to have a plan for emergency preparedness.
Yes, in place by next April 1st.
Right.
Prepared for unions to see by a date in next February. The original contract was run by the village and town attorneys, and they both had some issues with it because it lacked detail of what was actually going to be provided to us. So we revisited it. They added some more details, and both Janet and Ron have given their seals of approval to move forward with it.
So basically, it's to put us in compliance with the state mandated directives.
In, in fact, what it's doing is, and we all know that when the pandemic issues started back in March, that some of the questions we were asking is, who is an essential worker? Who is not? This plan will actually, and it's, the answer is, is as different as there are different municipalities in New York State. This, this mandated plan will put in place the steps that we will have to take as a local government, village, to, to address such issues in the future. And obviously, the town has to do the same thing, and it becomes advantageous financially to each of us that we, if we do it as a joint agreement, and that's what you have in front of you now, that will be executed by the town, the village, and a company called Emergency Preparedness Solutions will provide some leadership. I'm very happy to say that Anita is taking the leadership on this, the village, and I believe her part of the county is which part.
Yes. And it does have to be run through the union representatives.
For. Do we have a motion supporting that and authorizing the mayor to sign this agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any extensions? Okay, that's passed. We have a number of surplus items of equipment, which are listed in your packet tonight, and would ask for a motion, the village, to proceed with auctioning those off.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any, any discussion on any item on there? If not, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? That's good to go. As occurs each year about this time, John Howton, who operates one of the two dog sled operations on Mirror Lake, has filed an application that paid the fee, requesting permission to operate his dog sled rides on Mirror Lake, the ice being sufficient and ending whenever the ice becomes unsafe in the late winter. Again, he has, I believe, has provided the insurance, if any of it's needed.
Yes.
I always talked to my office the other day and just said hello, which was nice of it. I would ask for a motion authorizing the approval of this dog sled license application as presented. So moved.
Second.
Are further discussion?
Yeah, one quick question, Craig. I'm assuming that everything he does will be in compliance with the governor's COVID rules.
Yes, we discussed that. There are no rules as of yet specific to his business, but, but he will be doing the same sort of distancing, sanitizing, only allowing family units to ride, not putting strain deuce together that, that I believe will be used by Florida this winter in all of their activities.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other comments? We'll call a motion. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Let Mr. Howton know that he's wishing a good winter and a safe one. Anything else needed to come up under your group?
No, that is all.
Okay, we'll move on to the treasurer. I did excuse the treasurer tonight because she has worked, working on the conversions that she is on the accounting systems. She put in almost an entire weekend, either here or working from home. So just playing a little catch-up when I went downstairs. So I told her we give her a break. So I have in front of you tonight the warrant for payment of bills totaling $664,322.60. You all have received the deal on those. I did not see anything that was unusual, and I think, Peter, you looked at these.
Yes.
So moved. Thank you, Peter.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good to go. The next item we have is, first of all, I should ask, is there any new business to come up that is, that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to old business. Main Street reconstruction project, I think, I, I, I think we just took a major step and you're aware of it, so I'm not going to add any comments on that at this time unless, unless you have a question.
Is the definitive date on the public?
November 17th is the date for shooting for, and that'll, that'll be, what I'm hoping to do is, is have a small panel that will include Brad, Ivan for sure, and maybe a couple more to answer questions, which we'll have to do virtually through, through some kind of a chatroom facility. All of that will be set up. MJ is working on that, getting that ready. So November 17th for that. We continue to work on, on, on some of the other issues that involve parking, I think, tomorrow. I think our appraiser may be coming around building time or a little bit after. I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Land use code update, I think we just got that from Dean. So we can, we can pass on that tonight. Short-term rental update. I am, I do want to say that we, we were, we were, Mike, Mike Gortaselli did come to the work session of the village board. It will continue to do that monthly and was able to provide us with confirmation of, of all the information we heard about that Patrick was presenting tonight. Also was able to give us some comments on how host compliance is working with the complaints that are coming in. I think he said they had had something like 92 complaints, although 17 of them were sort of congregated around one property. And when I mean that, I mean the neighbors around all sort of joined, joined forces. So it was one complaint 17 times or something like that. And, and that will, that will obviously continue to go on. And I, I, I also thought that the discussion about building applications in the village was very, very helpful to us, especially when we're aware of the fact that on the, on the real estate sales side, there seems to be a shift in focus from, from the traditional buyers.
It will tell.
So time, only time will tell, but right now it seems to be very busy.
Did he say that no SDR applications are coming in on a regular basis, or is it sort of leveled up?
I, I had the sense, correct me, Peter and others, I had the sense that it was leveling off at this point.
So I think I'm aware of some, or maybe somebody who has a permit is sold, so the new applicant is, has to apply for that.
That's correct.
They're not, I don't know, I'm asking. I don't think it's new, new ones, new owners maybe, but not new properties.
That's right, that's right. If there's a transfer of ownership, the permit does not follow with the sale.
So I think that's where you're seeing some, not necessarily new properties being added in the short-term rental inventory.
So I think that's going to be a significant part of our.
Analysis.
Analysis that we need going forward. Local government communications plan, Art, I don't think, and Anita, I don't think we've had anything in the last few days that I'm aware of.
No, I was going to say, there's been no meetings. It's just still working on the website last I knew, and Anita would have any updates on that.
Yeah, I believe.
And, and there may be some good news coming from that when, when all of it comes together. Okay, anything else? If not, I don't think the mayor has anything really significant to add. So I'll move the commissioner reports. Anything there?
Just have a question for Janet. Any new SDR lawsuit news?
They'll, they've been submitted, and so it's, you can't push them, but we've got all the arguments, all the paperwork, just make a decision.
And also, Mr. Gortaselli, last time he brought up the abandoned building law that the town passed two years ago, I was never aware. Is it possible that the village could, you know, tweak it and?
Yes. I think it was unsafe building.
Unsafe building.
Yeah. I don't know if we have any, but that was last used, to the best of my knowledge, there was a building on Mill Pond Drive, if you might recall.
Yes.
Where you made the corner where Dow Road goes, and that building was then bought at a tax sale.
And torn down.
And torn down. It's quite a, yes, we can pass a local law to that effect, it's quite a process to go through and take somebody's property down.
Yeah.
You can get down, pass the cost along.
That's right.
Mike, Mike claims that he can't, he was hands up tight, he can't do anything with what's happening. Bill, Bill.
No.
Deal nice and easy if it's collapsing on its own.
Yes, we can, we can, I did get a copy of that, and I'll be happy to look at it.
Yeah.
I think there might be a remedy also under the New York State Building Code, but, which applies to everybody, every municipality, whether you adopt it or not, so I'll look at that, too.
Yeah, well, Mike, Mike says he needs, he needs this, I don't know.
Thank you.
So we'll leave that in capable hands. Under correspondence, we have a
Mayor, just one moment, I apologize. Last Tuesday, we brought up during the workshop, workshop session, a purchase of the forklift for the electric department. It seemed that everyone was on board, and Kimball went to Mindy and from the email exchange that I read that everyone, everything seems to be in order. We just need authorization from the board. And by the time Mindy was able to process it, I guess the agenda had gone out. Is there any way we can add that on to the agenda?
If it suits the pleasure of the board, I spoke to Mindy about it today. This is a special program through the New York Power Authority. The, the cost of the unit is about $44,000. It has, it would be amortized through the PPAC portion of our bills, frankly, would contribute, I'm going to guess, less than a cent, less than a penny on the, on the electric rate that you're paying. And it would be, it would be, it'll show up on a monthly bill from NIPA that way. It's a battery-powered piece of equipment, which, which is why NIPA is promoting it, it's green energy, which is, which is okay. The advantages of buying this piece of equipment by the department is that currently they're in the process of trying to store all of our inventory of transformers, which have traditionally been kept out of doors. We're trying to store them for environmental reasons, we're trying to keep them inside, out of, out of the environmental risk areas. And what they have now to move them with, they use the digger truck, which is not very efficient for forklifting, and it takes two men to, to move one transformer, whereas one operator with a, with a lift such as is requested can accomplish the same thing. Also, this lift is small enough to operate inside a building safely, the digger truck really isn't. So Mindy does have the material, she showed it to me late this afternoon. I suggested that we put it on the next agenda for approval. It's up to you members if you wish to act on it sooner.
So I'm fine moving forward. We think, we know all the details, we know everything about it.
Would you like to make a motion, Peter, then?
I'm making a motion to purchase the NIPA sponsor, zero percent interest, I believe it's over four years, paid for by PPAC for the electric department.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? Questions? In my conversation with Mindy, she did indicate that she felt that it was, from a budget standpoint, that the department can handle that. So with that said, if there's no other questions, we'll call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're good to go on that. Thank you for that, Jason. And as I said, the library just sent a letter of appreciation for the time that they used the, they used curbside parking to accomplish the new roof on the library. I think we all agree that they probably have given that building a nice upgrade and one that will support the library for a good many years to come. Other than that, there is, I just happened to receive this notice of a public hearing, it's a significant upgrade on Main Street, I'm just going to mention, that there is a public hearing, it'll be on Wednesday, November 4th. It's in connection with the Lake Placid Hotel Partners, which is the Northwoods Inn property, presenting a public hearing on proposed changes to the building that includes a new, a new finish on the outside, new energy-efficient windows, reconfiguration of their entry, installation of an elevator on the north side of the building, and some seasonal use of the outdoor rooftop area. This public hearing will be conducted virtually, and there is a, let's see here. Just looking to see if they include the information on how you sign into that. I don't see that information on the project itself is, is available on North Elvis Code Enforcement webpage. But what I do not see here, Anita, is any, any directions?
If you go to the webpage.
I think if you go to the webpage, it'll be there. But I just, I just offer that for information, it's, it's, it's a pretty significant upgrade, and it includes a new, essentially, a brick facade on the exterior, Peter. I think that's what I saw. And the one, the one picture I saw, that kind of took me back to my childhood year, when it used to be, correct, and before they put that extension on the front of the truck. So anyway, that's, that's just a little bit of additional news. Again, I think, I think it's important for us to be aware of these projects because even though we're dealing with, you know, the, the issues of the pandemic on Main Street, at the same time, we have property owners with confidence enough to go forward with some pretty significant projects. So with that said, I'll ask if there's anything further to come before the board. If not?
Oh, I'm, not to prolong the meeting, but I just want to bring up again, I know, we talked about it on Tuesday, about making sure that the voting experience for all of our constituents goes smooth, and there aren't any unnecessary distractions up to the point where we can handle that. And we did have a parade on Sunday, which was, I was super enthusiastic about the fact that they were so passionate about their candidate. I just, people think there is a perception, maybe on election day, if those sort of things continue to happen, there, there could be a perception of intimidation. What is our stance as a board regarding ensuring that the, just the election day goes smoothly, and we are 100% protecting everyone's right to walk through the door to vote? I know that, are we adding an additional police officer on just in case?
Jason, those are all civil rights that are guaranteed under the Constitution, you know that as well as I do. And to that, we have a police department which is active, and I'm confident that any issues that are untoward will be addressed as, as appropriate. On that, I'm not anticipating that our election day will be any different than
The village board certainly would not condone any
No, we would not condone any type of
But also, it's a reminder that the elections are run by the county board of elections, not by the village.
No. Well, I agree 100%, Janet, I'm talking about that 100 feet, and to make sure that the entrance and exit and around is just, is, I think Lake Placid has a significant level of decorum and respect for the act of voting, and I don't anticipate, it's just want to make sure that if we make, the village does whatever it can to maintain that level of decorum and respect.
I don't have any doubt that we will, with the guidance from the election commissioners.
That's a good point, Jason. You need to understand that the election commissioners really have complete jurisdiction over the election process.
And I know, Jason
Well, I probably understand. I'm talking about outside, but anyway.
Instances where there were signs placed too close to the polling place, and, and those, those were addressed.
Those removed, yes.
And we had them removed. So I, I think if the complaint is filed and it's found to be credible, and there is a violation, I have no doubt that the town, the village, the elected people working together will take care of it.
Yeah, I, again, to each their own, vote whoever you would like to vote for, I just want to make sure that that process is smooth and as patriotic as we possibly can make it, that's all.
I voted.
Many of us, many of us, many of us have already voted largely because of the pandemic risks, to the extent we can minimize those. I, I certainly, I, I voted early for that reason, and I think, I think many people that have those same concerns did the same thing. So we may see a smaller line than what, what we traditionally might expect. At this point, I would ask if there's any other members of the public who are listening in that may have comments or questions? Elizabeth?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just had one question, the November 17th meeting on Zoom, is that the public information session?
That will be, yes, that will be a public information session. I'm working with members of that committee right now to put together an appropriate press release so that people will have the information that is needed. Although we'll undoubtedly use a public meeting room under COVID, we're limited to the number of people that can be present, so it will have to be done on a virtual basis.
Okay, is there a time yet?
I don't have that information, that will be in the press release. I'm thinking it's, it's going to be undoubtedly in the neighborhood of 5:30, something like that, someplace between 5:30 and 7 o'clock.
Okay. And it looks like the bids, or the bid that was accepted is a little bit more than what was expected last year, I believe, or maybe this year earlier. Is there, is that going to require any sort of financial, like finagling on the village's side? Like, is the village going to have to put up more money than expected?
What we never knew for certain, it was always against, $9 million was against. This is 30 years, zero percent interest, so from nine to $10 million, it's minus the grant money, minus what the state's going to pony up, it's over that long a period of time, it's not, not much money.
Liz, the estimates from the engineer that had been received previously were 9.6 million, and the, the low bid came in at 10.035, so it's about a 4, it's 4% higher than what, what the, what our engineers had estimated before the, before the bid came out. I will say that I'd looked at, there are about 10 different segments in that contract that dealing with water, stormwater, pavement, sidewalks, you name it. But the single largest item that is, is different from the estimate is, is a term called mobilization, and that is because they were asked to bid the project with, and accept the months of July and August each season. So they're, in effect, they're mobilizing twice as many times each year as they would ordinarily have to do. So there's some additional costs in there. I believe it will be, having some further conversations with them. Despite that, they were still the low bidder on, on all segments, there are only one or two, one segment of 10 different projects where they weren't the lowest bidder at the table, but overall, they're the low bidder.
Okay.
And I think we're, and, and to some degree, you have to look at these in the sense that what, what the low bidder included in mobilization costs may, may, in effect, have been counteracted by another section where the, where the, where, where there was a flip. So it, it, it could be they're higher in that area, but then there is, so I don't know yet, and we won't know until we sit down with them, what they have included in there that may have been taken out of some other sections of the, of the 10 different pieces of this project. Don't know if that helps, it's, but that's the answer.
Okay. And I, I believe you alluded to it earlier, but what's the latest update on the NVT upper lot? Or the Upper Municipal Lot, whatever. I didn't know when you say NVT.
We are
They don't see it anymore, they're going to have to pay us licensing.
We are still working on that project, I believe, and there's some necessary work being done right now in terms of valuations because there are some properties involved where, where we're exchanging or otherwise acquiring some additional props, small pieces, 20-foot strips, stuff like that, that we're doing to make this project align with the street correctly. And once, once we have agreement on those items, then I think we'll send this project to structural engineering for final design.
Nothing moves quickly in municipal, municipal world.
That's certainly true. Anything else?
Uh, no, but I definitely want to set up a time with you at some point to talk about your memories about the hotel Northwood.
I'd be happy to do that. I'm the oldest one in the room, so that'll be easy. Scott? Motion
Motion adjourned meeting.
Second.
All right, seconds. Peter, one of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to the, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all, have a good night.